So, the new item is, it's the Plaza West Commercial Development. It's a proposed construction of a commercial development with 93,800 square feet of retail bank and restaurant space located near the intersection of 146A and 146. The parcel is zone B3, but here's like a conceptual review. A shopping center is allowed in the B3 zone. I have a special use permit and I'll let Paul just briefly describe what that means in the context of the regulations.
The town board creates zones within the town. That's probably most of how all of you know. B3 is one particular zone. Within zones, there are permitted uses and there are special uses, which are actually permitted uses of the town board. In determining that a use that's subject to a special use is to be placed into a zone, is not necessarily going to be an easy fit. It's got unique characteristics that require additional latitude on the part of the planning board as far as requiring certain things to make that use fit into that zone. So, the town code has a section 208-79 that has a number of standards that apply to special uses, which don't apply to other permitted uses. So, a special use is a permitted use, meaning it's permitted in the zone and it has a right to be there, subject to the board's review to make sure not only that seeker issues are addressed, that there's no significant environmental impacts, but also the list of standards in 208-79 are satisfied. So, this is a special use and as a result, the board will consider those standards and there'll be a public hearing at some time in the future.
Thank you, Paul. I just noticed that Michael Hale is in the back there. Were you there earlier?
I just walked in.
Just walked in.
Yeah.
Okay, Mike. So, just commenting about the great job you here did on the planning board and the fact that we tremendous asset that the county store district, through your knowledge of landscape architecture, has proposed green infrastructure solutions and sustainable planning and all of this is associated with pressing stormwater and sewage is involved in our rivers.
Indeed, thank you, yes.
And thank you for your years of work as a planning board member. In terms of a little token, I guess John mentioned about, we're very frugal here, but we'll give you the, your name tag.
Oh, awesome.
So, we'll actually pick that up after the meeting.
All right.
That a buck, that's a buck.
Appreciate that, Kim.
Okay, so, I also want to bring everyone's attention, for the record, that I live in a short forest neighborhood and I am a member of the Shore Forest Park District Board as well. So, just for the record to have that, do I have any financial interests or state relatives to this project? Could you leave me a little bit? Or just basically? Okay, so, in terms of order, the applicant will make his presentation about the proposed project, followed by staff comments. We have professional staff here, a grown engineer, that to review this. Keeping in mind, this is a conceptual plan, okay? So, there's a lot, they're just providing some ideas that are being proposed here that has not filed in terms of this presentation. So, have the staff comments and then we'll allow for public input. On this particular application, this is not a public hearing, okay? So, technically, we do not have to allow for public input. But I will allow for, you know, any questions that you may have or issues or concerns that you have relative, both positive and negative, relative to this particular project. And, like I said, we'll allow that discussion to take place and then we'll also have the planning board ask questions and as well of the applicant as we go through the process. So, once again, I'll turn over to the applicant for his presentation, followed by staff comments and public input and the planning board discussion.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Scott Lansing with Lansing and Narian here tonight for the Plaza West Commercial Development. This is obviously a conceptual layout plan. This is the first meeting that we've had with this board and with the town, the first time we've presented this project. I am here this evening with the applicant for the project, Mr. Scottero of Route 146, Route 146A Properties. Our ultimate goal objective for this evening is just to obtain feedback from the board and hopefully advance to preliminary final design for the project. What I will do is go through existing conditions, proposed conditions, comments that we have received, and then outline the next steps for the project. Existing conditions, site location wise, the aerial photo is probably the best map to look at, 146 being on the south bottom of the page, that was 146 going up roughly towards the middle. Approximately 20.26 acres, there are two parcels that comprise the overall parcel. Zoning for the parcel is B3 neighborhood business. As you can see from the aerial, the parcel is currently vacant. As far as surrounding uses, we have a mix of surrounding uses. We do have residential to the kind of extreme north and to the east of the project and then towards the south, there are many different commercial types of uses. As far as soils on the site, we do have silt loam, fine sand throughout the parcel. Topography wise, generally rises up in the middle of the parcel and then slopes down towards the east on the eastern side because it is the Duaskill, does run along the southeastern border of the project. We have performed wetland delineations on the parcel. We are currently waiting for jurisdictional determinations. Those are pending. As far as Army Corps of Engineers wetlands, we do have approximately 1.84 acres of Army Corps of Wetlands on the parcel. And New York State DEC, our wetland scientist, did not identify any on the parcel. As far as land conservation zone, there is one, not land conservation zone, outlined on the zoning map, that is in the southeast corner along the Duaskill, and that is something that we will highlight on the maps as we move forward. We do feel that that's at the bottom of the site, far away from any development, so we don't feel that would have any impact on the concepts that we are presenting this evening. As far as proposed conditions on the map here, our orientation is slightly different. North is towards the left of the page, so if you were to rotate this 90 degrees, it wouldn't match up with the aerial photo. We are proposing a commercial mixed-use development. We are proposing it in accordance with the B3 zone of the Town Equipment Park zoning code. There is one area variance that we will be asking for, and we'll get into that a little later, small variance in this vicinity of the project. As far as parking, we are proposing parking for all the various uses in accordance with the Town Equipment Park zoning code as well. And as far as the buildings and the tenants, there are no specific tenants committed at this time, it's something that the applicant is working on. We are proposing four buildings overall, building one and four in this area, these are the retail buildings that we are proposing. First building, the bigger building, is approximately 54,000 square feet. We are proposing 270 spaces for that particular building, again, in accordance with the code. Building four, the other retail building, is approximately 30,000 square feet. We are proposing 150 parking spaces positioned around that building, again, in accordance with the zoning code. Building number two, which is in this area, is proposed as a restaurant that is approximately 6,000 square feet. We're currently showing 110 spaces for that restaurant use. We feel that's conservatively on the high side for that building, if you go by what the Town Equipment Park code has for parking, that will be refined as we hopefully move forward. And the last building, building number three in this vicinity, is proposed as a bank use, approximately 3,800 square feet, and we are proposing 16 spaces surrounding that building. Access to the site, two major access points. The primary access point would be from 146, again, north orientation, this one is left. At 146 in this area, we would have the secondary access to access the site. At this time, we are proposing full access at both of those entrance points.
Scott, excuse me, one second. You said primary access will be at 146A.
146A.
Okay.
Okay. As far as, we understand traffic, traffic impacts are definitely a concern, something that we need to evaluate. We do have Creighton Manning Engineering, they are a traffic consultant, they are in the process of putting together a traffic impact study. That is a work in progress and as we move forward, we will obviously coordinate with the town, town engineer, and the New York State DOT on that information. Just one second. Also, as a part of the layout plan, we have performed a conceptual grading plan for the parcel. Again, topography does rise up and fall back down as it goes towards the Duaskill. We have performed a conceptual grading plan to make sure that the soils in the site can be constructed as shown and things do balance out on the parcel. Also, as a part of that grading plan, as far as wetland impact, we have one figure of a federal wetland that comes into the site. We are proposing approximately 0.14 acres or 6,000 square feet of wetland impact. Pedestrian path linkages on this concept, we have basic sidewalks in front of the parcel and that was a comment that was consistent amongst the comments that we did receive. We do plan on providing a path system and linkages throughout the project to connect to 146, 146A and to provide pedestrian linkages from the previous buildings. So, that is as well a work in progress. As far as open space, we feel we have some good gink, open space on the project. The town code does require 35 percent, the project does propose 11.5, which is approximately 55 percent, so we're over the green space requirement. And as far as buffers to adjoining properties, we feel we have adequate buffers to adjoining properties, including the residential properties towards the north. Property to the north is zone residential, I think it's R3. It is also owned by the applicant and the applicant is offering that land for the planning board's direction, be it open space or some sort of a buffer to the overall project. So, we're looking forward to working with the board on how that parcel will be handled. Utilities for the project, water, storm sewer. Water is located along 146A, we can extend it in and serve all the projects for domestic and federal flows. Sanitary sewer is located along 146 and there is also a sanitary sewer corridor that goes through the parcel. And last but not least is stormwater for the project. We would be managing stormwater within the parcel. We are showing two conceptual stormwater management areas. Those obviously have not been designed competitively yet, but those will be used for pre-post runoff reduction and we will be applying green infrastructure techniques to the overall parcel, working with the town engineer and the buildings inspector for the town. So, that's essentially the proposed development plan for the project. As far as comments, we have received several comments. Also, I would like to note that the town did request that we send out public notices early to make sure the public was involved and informed of the project as we move forward. We did send those out on January 2nd and since we are the first and only project on the agenda, I believe everybody has received those notices.
Within a certain distance of the property.
Correct, correct. Public notices, I'm sorry. And we did provide the cards for the town.
And certainly we have five of these letters and things like that.
Okay. As a part of the technical review process, we do receive comments on the project.
Quiet, please.
We do feel overall that the comments are technical in nature. We will provide formal responses for all the comments that we have received from the various departments. This is obviously a first submission, the first concept. Many of the comments deal with more advanced levels in the development and we will adjust all those comments. We're fully prepared to address those comments. And we do feel the plan and the studies are a work in progress, it's something we're advancing with. And as far as the comments go, I will not go through all the comments, but I'll just go through some of the ones that I feel are important. I have a staff who will go through their comments individually, but just the ones that we feel are important, but be more than happy to say the same ways, any of the comments that happen. As far as the planning director comments, I think those were relatively straightforward. We understand those, those are technical in nature, we will address those. As far as the town designated engineer, same thing with those comments, with the exception of comment number 21 regarding the planting and screening of the 100-foot buffer in the residential zone. The zoning does require 100-foot buffer in this area. We have provided that buffer to the residential zone to the north and the question was, is how would that buffer be planted? Our thought is, since the applicant is offering this land for a buffer, open space to the town, we'd like the board to consider this as the buffering, vegetation, screen from the adjoining residential zone to the north. So, we offer that for the board's consideration. As far as Trail Subcommittee, same thing, we did, do feel those comments are technical in nature, we will address those. Overall, we felt that those dealt with pedestrian paths and linkages and providing bike racks and we do have good ideas for how we can provide that and involve that and we will provide that as we move forward. As far as Environmental Conservation Commission, those as well, we do feel that those comments were technical in nature and we're fully prepared to address those. There were two. One was relative to recommending a positive declaration and environmental impact statement for the project. We'd like to continue to work with the board. We feel that the board, that the project is in accordance with the zoning. We have many technical comments, but I think there are technical comments that are typical for development of this type and we're looking forward to working with the board addressing those and we don't feel that an environmental impact statement is something that's appropriate for this project, but we'll follow the view of this board. The second comment was relative to the change in the skyline and the visual character of the area. Again, the project we are proposing is in accordance with the zoning for area height, things of that nature for the building. It would be single-story buildings, so we don't really feel it would quite fit the category of the skyline and we will be providing architectural elevations for all the buildings for the board to review and consider as we move forward. Last but not least is, comes from the Department of Building and Development and this goes into the one variance that the project does need. For the most part, Mr. Myers' comments, we feel are technical in nature, we will address those. The third comment was relative to the parking setback. And within the B3 neighborhood business, section 208-38, it outlines a 20-foot parking setback as typical with a 100-foot setback to residential zone. So, within the residential zone, we have the 100 feet. Within the other areas, we show a 20-foot setback. That section of the code goes on to reference section 208-89, which is relative to specifically shopping centers. And within that, the code, it says that, within that section 208-89 for shopping centers, it outlines 50 feet to a residential zone with the residential zone to the north of the project. Mr. Myers, I'm sorry, and also that section of the code goes on to outline zero feet to a business or an industrial district. So, Mr. Myers, in his interpretation of the code, is saying that the parcel does have an adjoining residential district, so he is taking a conservative approach, that he feels that 50-foot setback should be provided even in this area. Even though these are commercial type uses, he feels that's a conservative approach to that. So, based on that, we would need a variance for this particular area because we are showing 20 feet even though the shopping center section of the code says zero feet to a commercial or industrial type district. So, we would be requesting a variance for that. And Mr. Myers did indicate that that is a variance that he will support as we move forward. I think that's essentially it for the presentation. Again, we're here tonight for questions and comments from the board and to hopefully advance to the preliminary final stage. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. We'll do, we'll have staff comments now and we'll go from there and probably answer questions. Does any customer have a question right now that they want to ask Scott before we go to the back? Okay.
Yes, I'll note for the record that comments that have been offered by the Trail Subcommittee, they have been forwarded to the planning board for your consideration. The Environmental Conservation Commission has the following four recommendations. In view of the size and scope of the proposed project, the ECC recommends that the planning board consider issuing a positive declaration under seeker and that the applicant be required to carry a draft environmental impact statement. Also, the ECC notes that the project may result in intrusions into federal jurisdictional wetlands. The applicant must avoid intrusion into the Army Corps of Wetlands or apply for a federal wetland permit for disturbance of more than a tenth of an acre in total for the project. The Town Equipment Park should be provided copies of all related correspondence. The limits of the DEC wetlands, the LC zone and 100-foot buffer zone, federal jurisdictional wetlands shall be identified on the plot plan. Also, the project has the potential to change the skyline and visual character of the project area. As a result, the ECC recommends the applicant be required to conduct and submit the visual impact assessment for the planning board and ECC's review. Steve Myers offered the following comments. The project appears to be in allowed use in the B3 zone. Land clearing appears to extend into the R1 zone, where you're believed to be the same property owner. Per 208-89G, parking is to be no closer than the building line for 50 feet minimum. Several areas, this is not done, variances should not be considered at this point in time. The plan should be reconfigured to meet requirement sensitivity of the proposal. Traffic studies for the proposed entrances are required. A new curb cut so close to a ramp and intersection needs to be considered along with the use of the existing driveway that are in nice traffic issues due to its proximity to the intersection. Stormwater considerations will require much more information. It would appear ponds are already being considered, which are last resort after providing no other method. Survival protection of the Duaskill would be of strong influence on the project and providing water and source to businesses adjoining this proposal should be required in development of the residential parcel to the north side, if any intention should be considered. Getting my comments, I do offer the following. The project would need to be submitted to review and approval by, to the Seratoga County Store District. Reserve capacity should be determined and any connections to the existing store system must be made per the store district's adopted rules and regulations. And I also noted, involved and interested agencies in accordance with seeker requirements are expected at this point in time to include the following. Town Equipment Park Planning Board, Person Park Water Authority for the water connection, and the Soviet County Store District number one for the store connection permit. New York State Department of Transportation, traffic studying and evaluation, work permits and curb cuts and approvals for the proposed access driveways on New York State Routes 146 and 146A. New York State Department of Environmental Conservation for the store and speed permit. New York State Department of Water System. U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for the jurisdictional determination of weapons disturbance permit. New York State Preservation Office of Archaeology, Preservation Office, I'm sorry, for the archaeological analysis. U.S. Fish and Wildlife for the endangered species analysis. Seratoga County Planning Board is an interested agency as a recommending body under section 249, general rule. And we also add that the subsequent to Steve's comments, Town Equipment Park's zoning board appeals for the area variance. The next comment was, the detailed traffic study shall be submitted by the applicant, which includes the proposed access driveways and the New York State Routes 146 and 146A intersection, County Routes 9, Bishop Parish intersection. Traffic studies should also evaluate the level of service impacts to Route 146A and our rural drive intersection and Jonesville Fire Department Station number two, access from New York State Route 146A. As far as the planning board deliberations this evening, I would recommend that we provide. If you have any additional thoughts as to the study area for traffic that got into the applicant, so it can be included. We would also note that the plan currently proposes a total of 546 total parking spaces with a total required number of spaces for building number two to ultimately determine as plans progress through the site plan review process. The number of spaces will ultimately be determined in accordance with section 208-99B1 of the map code. They've also noted that stormwater quality and quantity will be required to be treated onsite and appears areas have been reserved for such practices on the concept plan by the applicant. However, these areas reserved are likely to be subject to changes as plans develop in advance to preliminary phase. The applicant should clarify his green space calculation, includes the stormwater management areas. Also, as plans progress, a lighting plan will be required that shall delineate the type of fixture to be used in the subsequent lighting pattern. The height of the fixture and wattage of the lighting system utilized should also be noted. It is recommended that the site utilize International Dark Sky Association of Light Lighting. Also, a dehydrated circulation plan should be provided, should be vetted out by preliminary design to infer the waftability amongst establishments within appropriate shop locations.
Thank you, John. Joel, we'll turn over to you for the comments from us.
In JCR, on November 1, I will limit my comments to those that have not been covered by other topics that have. Under general comments, we identified various permits that would be required. A full sweep will be required as the climate equality control and big infrastructure elements for stormwater. Project will require a clear proof from Person Park Water Authority. The board should be provided with correspondence from CPWA to get the ability to this to support a project. Similar to the Seratoga County Store District, the project should earnest itself to become letter indicating county store district ability and willingness to provide sewer to the project. As indicated by all staff, including the size of the project and set of the traffic impact study should be passed for review. This document will also need a review approved by the Regional Office and New York State Department of Transportation. Along with that, all proposed access improvements along New York State 146 and 146A will require review and approval by the New York State Department of Transportation. Under seeker, based on a review of the scope, the project appears to be a type one action because it's activities other than residential facilities that involves physical alteration of ten acres. Assuming the planning board is to request immediate assistance, a secret coordinated review is required. We identified several involved major agencies that cooperate with the staff and identify them. On the full environmental set of formally provided some comments, relative information, understanding, if it is still at a contingency stage, some of those materials won't come to light at providing thanks for them. On the site plans, similar to the chief zone, now certainly the private community district and the community use. We did also note that it could be considered a shopping center under section 208 being the zone. Did review it in accordance with the above requirements for the respective zone and district and this is indicated. We did identify the harmful buffer to the north, however, it is a horizontal buffer, but there was nothing that appeared meaningful in the form of primary landscaping, provided buffer. We did suggest the planning board offer some direction to the applicant if there was a supplement buffer. We did request to show the LC zone that borders the Duaskill and the land that that would carry, it looks simple and practical. We did suggest that the plan incorporate interconnectivity and external connectivity for pedestrians. We begin to challenge by direction of the applicant if there is desire to provide improved internal linkages. We did note that the project will provide, will the project provide green linkages to local transit facilities? It should be discussed with the Capitol Mission Administration Authority regarding inclusion of such facilities in this project. Balance and comments are not too great. I don't have any comments.
Thank you, Joel. Great. Any more members have any questions of John or Joel at this particular time?
I have a pretty quick question. We went to the north, we mentioned that you were indicating, I'll be turning that over to the town or we just use that? I don't know.
The applicant is looking for direction from the planning board and how they would address the town. I think this is actually the applicant would offer that land for dedication to the town if the town didn't want that land. So, if they wanted the land retained with the property with some kind of a forever wild reason on it or if the town would like to ownership, the applicant is a, either.
I'd like to turn it over to make comments from the public would like to make on this project. Briefly state your name and comments.
Bob Walker. I live at 10 Stratford Drive, which is in Sherwood Forest.
Okay, I think they're likely to, she like, she can get it all.
You want my name as a speaker?
Yes, please.
My name is Bob Walker. I live at 10 Stratford Drive in Sherwood Forest, which is slightly north of the proposed shopping center. I've been a, I'm a retired engineer and I lived at the present, my present location for over almost 21 years. And the first comment I would like to say is I would hope the town would take, at the northern buffer zone, I hope the town would take, have a deed it over and control the use of that because there's nothing to prevent the owners from deciding at some later date that they wanted to expand their shopping center and it would get closer to the people on Mallborough. So, I think to prevent that, I think the town would be wise to take the deed. Second of all, I had, I looked at some of the zoning codes and I looked at the standards for special use permits specified in 208.79 and the standards required a board to consider several factors, which I would like to discuss. One is the proposed use may have on the increase of vehicular traffic congestion in public highways. Being an engineer, I did Being an engineer, I did some, uh, back of the envelope, uh, calculations, and I figured if that parking lot was occupied just twenty percent for a period of between nine in the morning and nine in the evening, and the average person stayed there from an hour to an hour and a half, you would have anywhere from two thousand to twenty-five hundred vehicles exiting and exiting that parking, uh, plaza, and that's a lot of traffic. Uh, I have specific concerns about the exit on, uh, 146 because I'm a frequent diner at, uh, the Ravenswood, and I know what a job it is to get in and out of that, uh, intersection. Frequently when the busy times of the day, when the, uh, traffic backs up at the traffic light and may go back a thousand to fifteen hundred feet, and the only way you can get in is if somebody will let you in, uh, when, uh, if you want to make a left turn and turn off 146 into that plaza, then you'll have the same problem when people are, uh, coming out of there. You have to cross one line of traffic, get in that little median, and, and then deal with the traffic heading eastbound on 146 to get into, and go east, and then you have to also deal with the traffic going into the, uh, uh, Price Chopper Plaza and the Cumberland Farms gas station, so I think any additional traffic at that particular intersection would be a, a major problem and could be a source of accidents. Uh, on 146A, I have similar concerns. I've mentioned the amount of traffic I think that's going to go there. The, uh, exit which is proposed here is only a short distance on this ramp, couple of hundred feet, and I think it, there's a possibility of much backup there in both directions, and, uh, the road is, at certain times of the day is already very busy. I, uh, when I try to get out at certain times, I have to wait sometimes five minutes, ten minutes to, uh, pull out safely. Uh, my second concern is the, uh, standards for, require that the, uh, park district, uh, excuse me, uh, consider the, if the property is compatible, proposed use of the property is compatible with the, uh, town's comprehensive plan, and I've looked at that, and the town's comprehensive plan for land use says a goal is preserving property